Good afternoon, I'm Jackie Hall.
And I'm Susan White and you've joined us for a special town meeting. One that deals with women and their stereotypes. The wife, the mother, the daughter, the woman in school, be she teacher, student, or parent.
The woman at work. Typist, physician, household technician, mechanic, to name a few. Do all of these women have an understanding of each other that is basic to being born female? Is there a shared sensitivity conditioned by growing up in a male-dominated society? Or, as we ask today when we discuss womanhood, is the common bond a lot of bunk?
There are stereotypes. Some of the stereotypes must be overcome. Other times, in other situations, the stereotype can be very comfortable, very useful. It can assist the woman in enjoying a certain identity, which a total absence of stereotype may force her to have too much freedom. And there is such a thing as too much freedom. I have heard it expressed, that freedom is good provided there is freedom from something. Unlimited freedom can create terrible confusion.
What are some of the stereotypes that you refer to that you feel are good? And what are some of those that you feel are not so good?
Perhaps the stereotype of simply being female, of relating to a male as an opposite. I'm sure some of the older people here will remember that lovely classic play with Katharine Hepburn and Spencer Tracy, Adam's Rib, where we had a husband and wife who were both lawyers. And after fighting each other in court, I think the show closed on the line, "Viva la Difference."
Anyone else? Where are we as we near the end of December or the end of International Women's Year 1975? Where are we as women? Anyone?
I don't think we've come as far as sometimes we think we have. I, for one, was kind of shocked to find that in the most progressive states in the Union, New York and New Jersey, the ERA was defeated. And I spent a lot of time studying history and I can't help but think that we really haven't come too far. And this, it seems to me, is one of the problems that all women face. And it's one of the things that working women particularly should be alert to because they are the ones who see each other more often. They can communicate outside of the isolation of the household.
Isn't part of our problem the fact that we really haven't even taken advantage of the rights we have? We tend to sit back too often and complain without taking action. After all, we've had the vote for an awful long time. And yet, there are very, very few women who have engaged themselves in politics to the point where they can become elected. We have a tremendous force in politics, which we don't use. We have a great force in economics. They keep telling us that we have the control of the wealth. I'd like to find some of it, but in any case, they keep telling us this. And yet, we don't use it effectively. And sometimes I get a little exasperated at our own women because they don't take advantage. They don't push with the things that they already have. And I think that's one of the explanations of why ERA failed.
Don't you think a lot of women are afraid of ERA? They have never really, in a male-dominated society, been allowed to accept the accountability or responsibilities of the choices that they might be free to make. Therefore, you know, they're afraid of the responsibilities implied in ERA.
I think you're right, but I think also that there was a reaction that women felt, a large number of women, I think, anyway. And I think part of it is exemplifying that with the National Organization of Women, they now have a splinter group, which is made up of the original group that had originally established them. And they're calling it Woman's Purge, or Woman's Spurge, I think. I'm not sure of which. But at any rate, they are very concerned about the extremists in their group. And I think a lot of women are also concerned because we don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater. And I think a lot of women really feel that's what's happening. I think anytime you go too far to any extreme, we're going to find that there are more problems than we had before, when we were unhappy about something, but not everything.
Could we clarify for just a moment what ERA is? So that we're not throwing around initials without understanding.
Equal Rights Amendment.
Okay.
It has been passed and ratified here in the state of Maryland. I think we all understand that. But there are other states that have not.
And I think it's also important to recognize that the ERA has been ratified in at least New York, but that which was defeated was a referendum on a law within the state of New York itself and would not have immediately, it does not immediately affect the ERA approval of New York State on a national level. What is feared now is that with this, there will be a request to rescind that approval of the legislature. Which could have... I'd like to raise the question as to whether or not some of what is coming out might not reflect what we have been conditioned to as we have been growing up in our society. And when we speak about women not being more aggressive, or the fact that women do not take more advantage of, or the feeling that maybe we have gone too far, does this have anything to do with, I'd like to hear some discussion on this, as to what happened to us as we were growing up in our families, when we were going to school, and as we entered into the working world?
I think it's like with any kind of young child. We all grew up thinking that daddy was everything. Mama stayed at home and she did the housework. And we stereotyped ourselves. And as we grew up, we fall back into these same habits. And it's good, bad, or indifferent. You grew up and you ate, you ate and then you went to sleep. How many people go to sleep now or feel sleepy after they eat? It's just a habit. And you get to believe that all men are strong. And it's when you wake up and realize that you are the backbone and that you're the one who has to hold it up, that it becomes very frightening.
Why do you think this is so? Because all of us, I think, many of us, have watched, you know, growing up, our fathers go off to work and our mothers stay home and take care of the children. But our mothers, we watched them start early in the morning with the housework and getting the children off to school. We watched them work all day long with errands and shopping and all the chores, physical work, as well as mental and emotional work. And watched the man come home, daddy come home, exhausted, put his feet up, watch him be waited on, get his dinner, you know, and watch mother go on, you know, bathing the children, getting them into bed, tidying up the house after everybody else was sitting down and taking off. She goes, "Why didn't it sink in that the woman was really the one that was working a longer day?"
Because we were told that's what they were supposed to do.
Yes.
That's West Mama's role. That's what she's supposed to do. We see her every day, Mama doing this.
My mother, the reason some of us are not home doing that is because we looked and saw that that wasn't where the action was. That maybe that wasn't the role that we wanted for ourselves. And maybe we wanted a little piece of whatever daddy's role was. And so we looked that way.
Well, you know, history had sort of had it this way. When the women went across the plains, they were out there just working with the men, tilling the soil and working. And then after a time when the men were settled, the women then went into home, into the home to have the babies and to stay there. And it was just a pleasure for the man to come in. And she lived through her husband. And of course, as the years progressed, we saw the women, as the wars started, go out of the home and keep the home fires going by working and supporting families and being strong. And then as soon as the war was over, then they said, "Now you women go back in and let the men take all of the jobs."
Take your place.
Right. And then you go back home and wait on them. And then somewhere along the line, the women decided, "Well, this isn't what we want." That there's more to it than that. There's nothing wrong with maintaining your home. Definitely, there's a fine thing to do. But if you feel that you want to extend yourself and become occupied in other areas, this should be your right and your privilege.
I think you've made a good point when you say that there's a person should have a choice, though. And I think there's nothing wrong with being a person who wants to stay home and take care of the home because the home and the family are really the foundation of our society. And if we have every woman going out, having a career, and saying, "I don't want to be bothered with children," we're not going to have a generation to worry about that's going to come up.
Yes, but wouldn't it be nice if fathers were as interested in their children as the mothers traditionally have been? And I think the stereotype that has been damaging is the one which says that the woman's role is in the home, and that makes her inferior in some way. And I think by getting out of the home, we're saying, "We really don't want to accept that inferior status anymore."
And if we are in the home, then we are on par. That's what we're going to be saying.
But you can't be, because they won't let you be on par.
You're not going to be on par. A man's not going to let you be on par.
Let me ask you...
It'll come.
If you upgrade the status of the homemaker, would that then make the difference in the sense that you would give the benefits, as I heard someone say back there, and also a salary if that's necessary?
Then that's why you want to stay home, too.
Because in America, we traditionally... Is there anything wrong with that?
There's nothing wrong with it. Let him stay home. Let him help with the cooking and the cleaning and so forth.
You're proposing a very simple solution to a very serious and complex problem that has not gone on just for the one generation or the one century that some people are suggesting, but has gone on for as long as civilization has gone on. And, you know, I think the roots of the problem have become very psychological, so we can't, you know, we can't assume that because we pay someone a salary that they're going to begin to feel their womanhood or their feminism. And so, you know, I would not opt for simple solutions to a very serious problem, which we've done with other minorities.
Is that a step, though?
And it has to come from your self-incentive. You have to have the incentive to want to do this. And you have to have a goal, even if they're little or small, and then long-range goals. And this is important for every woman. If she's in the home, in the office, anywhere, you have to have goals.
Ladies, we want to get more into the stereotyping because it's terribly important where it begins and why. We will do that after these commercial messages.
It's obvious that those involved in the events of International Women's Year don't look at December 31st, 1975, as the end, but as a beginning. For no matter how informal an alliance the women's movement appears to be, it has produced national and local levels, various lists of priorities.
Last week, both the national and the Maryland agendas were given to the governor. Time will not permit that we look into all eight priorities on the Maryland agenda, so we'll concentrate on one, one that we've already begun to look at. Equal education and training, the elimination of sex role and cultural stereotyping. Why are stereotypes a matter of such concern? Where do they first begin? And how are these stereotypes perpetuated? How do they reflect on what we women make of ourselves? So let's get into this kind of discussion. Just where do the stereotype of the woman begin?
I have an example of where one began. A group of women in Baltimore, we started looking at children's books, just as a way of entertaining ourselves as we were home with our children. And quickly discovered, we looked at all children's books by five major publishers, and found out such things as nine out of 10 heroes or heroines were heroes, not heroines. And the books might be fine, but they were all heroes. And as we looked at what the boys and the girls did in the books, we found that most of the girls were watching the boys play marbles or play with their wagons. Also, as we looked at the role of the mother and the father, the mothers in the children's book were not even being good mothers. We didn't see one drive a car. We didn't see one read a newspaper. They were all standing, watching, combing hair, standing at the sink, wearing an apron, doing very mundane kinds of things that even we as mothers didn't think were very interesting as being good mothers. And I think some of the stereotyping very subtly begins in those very first readers at ages two, three, and four.
That is what happens with schools.
We, my organization, looked into the first books that children use in first grade. And we opened the first page and it said, "Boys do interesting things and girls watch." And the book was what my friend over here has been saying all the way through. Papa was building a fire in the yard. Papa was making a henhouse, but Mama was back there doing the dishes.
And you know, the little girls are also not supposed to play the rough games. They have the boys playing football and basketball and baseball, and they have Little League, and the little boys maybe don't want to go to Little League. And you see, they're put into Little League when they're five, six, and seven years old, competing. And I think that's where they learn this competitive spirit. And the young girls are told that you're going to do the more feminine kinds of jobs. You're going to enter, engage in the more feminine kinds of play. And, you know, take for instance, boys. If a boy would say that he wants to take ballet, oh, that's a taboo. You know, so this is a stereotype, not only where women, but where men are concerned.
Now, you related this, but have you done anything about it? What impact did you have on changing the kinds of sexist readers that they're using in the schools?
We had some, the personal effect of this was that all of us got out of the home. We, in going through the experience of looking at children's books, got very angry with what had happened to us when we were growing up. And so we ourselves changed as a process. We tried to, well, we did do a slideshow and we're presenting it to various groups of parents to help explain to them what some of the problem was. And we did write the publishers.
We are involved in a study in the Board of Education of the textbooks and the kinds of problems, the biases that we see there. One of the things that we often find, pointed out, are the kinds of stereotypes which were shown in readers 10 years ago. And many of these were blatant, obviously, and the kinds of things that you're describing. Oddly enough, women were largely the writers and illustrators of those textbooks. We're finding a much different approach to textbooks now, both on the elementary level as well as on the secondary level. But we're developing guidelines that will enable us in an educational setting to select these textbooks from a much more informed point of view.
So you are making changes, then, in terms of the kinds of readers that they're using?
Yes. This is definitely showing up in the kinds of materials that are being sent to us by publishers and the kinds that we are accepting as a part of our textbook order.
What do you say to somebody that says that we're confusing children? That we're not allowing them to be tight-cast and therefore they are unsure of what they are?
I think truth to that, I think. But I think that as you get, you get good role models within the home and in the society in general, the confusion disappears. And it is no longer completely frowned upon for a young man to study ballet because there are some very excellent role models, including the fact that the football teams now go in for ballet exercises. But this is the sort of thing that happens. And I think it's happening with children as well. And I also think that there is a good deal of progress being made. You were asking about changes. Good deal of progress being made in the training of counselors in guiding young people into occupational choices, where there is now a much greater encouragement of women to go into engineering, computer sciences, and so on. Some of you in Baltimore will remember the hullabaloo about opening Poly to girls. But this is a step forward and a major step forward. And it is the kind of thing that we need to keep pushing.
One of the things we're doing for older girls and starting before they become older girls is open to them career conferences, for instance, within the Girl Scout Council. We have these so that they are available to girls in junior high and middle school and high school. And as parents and people who deal with children, whether it's in groups or at home, all of us, I think, are becoming much more sensitive to the sorts of subtle expectations. The girl isn't going to be interested in the electronic thing, or the way the car works or something. We have made these assumptions and we're finding that they're no longer true because we're no longer helping to perpetuate their truth. And the same thing is true for boys because I think that liberation applies to human beings, and that includes men as well as women. But until we, as women, can, and I hope there is a common bond in this, until we can see that we have a lot to gain and open up our own worlds, I think men are going to be locked into theirs.
I think that's really true this morning. I've been an equal opportunity for several years and thought that I was pretty liberal. This morning, I made a telephone call to someone in another federal agency and was told, "Well, she wasn't in. Would you like to speak to her secretary?" And I said, "Well, that would be fine." And I was just absolutely shocked when a man was the secretary. And I thought that, you know, I'd heard everything. And, you know, naturally, this is something really terrific. This is fine, but I was really, I was still surprised, I have to admit it. And I started to stammer and stutter. Couldn't even think of what my message was when I heard this voice, so there you go.
You know, this brings up the idea, too, that we have to get men to change their attitudes. You know, there are many men that don't want to work for women. They just don't want to take orders from a woman in a high position. And so we really have to change that. And then, on the other hand, there are some women that don't want to work for women. They say, "I just can't get along with a woman."
But most of those same men take orders from their wives at home.
Some people feel that stereotype... They don't want to take orders from someone else at work because they don't want to duplicate it. They've been taking orders for so long, from mother and teacher, and you know, it goes on and on. I do worry, though, that men will get so self-conscious and so at sea and kind of lost in this whole thing, that they might just walk off and decide the family's not worth all the effort. If they're going to take all this hassle all the time, then why bother? And I think that's one of the problems we're having with, in the black culture, we have had that for some time, where a large number of black, young black men have not been involved in wanting to set up families. And it's happening now in the white culture as well, to a large extent. And a lot of it is the insecurity that they feel because the women can compete and can outshine them. And we know this is true, you know, and it's really kind of sad. So I'm wondering if we're going to wind up with a worse thing than we started with.
I don't think so. I feel very strongly that what we're talking about, and I'm hitchhiking on some other ideas here that have already been expressed, is the right of each individual to reach their potential, whatever that might be. And to be a human being, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about male, female, but what is it that enables you to be what you can be? And the other thing I want to say is that we have to be very much aware of Title IX and its implementation. And the fact that while we have Title IX, that Boards of Education are autonomous, and it behooves those of us who are concerned about what's happening in the school system, the need for counselors and teachers to be sensitized, and there are programs being developed, that it depends upon the community and their getting in there and seeing that something happens. I also, since we're talking about this, am aware that we have some youngsters from Western with us, and since they represent the younger generation and haven't had a chance to talk, I'm wondering what they could feed in here in terms of what's happening and what differences they see as they're growing up within their families and they see the roles of their parents maybe a little different from what we have, I think, a great deal different perhaps from what we experienced.
Would you like to say something? What are your feelings?
I think that, you know, now, women are getting more liberal because, like in my household, like my mother has her own career and she goes her way. My father has his, wherever, you know, they need, you know, that's fine, too. But she doesn't, you know, cater to him as he's acting all the time.
I would like to pick up this thought, if I may, about each individual reaching her potential or his potential. Because if we are going to be a society of complete individuals, each reaching his or her potential, what is going to happen to our children? And as I work in and around and with the courts and with adversary proceedings, I am seeing the children that are getting the damage as each one is going out. And people are beginning not to fight for the custody of children, but to fight to get the other one to take custody of children. And I'm very much concerned about what's going to happen to these children. And one other quick thought on that subject, as far as the stereotypes. Why are we saying housework and homemaking is dull? And why are we saying that factory work is interesting?
That's a very good point to end on. There are great many more points that you want to make, but let's take a break and we'll come back after these messages.
By emphasizing women's roles, does the movement unintentionally perpetuate the sex role stereotyping? It speaks out against. Should a priority of women's movement be in the education? And should the traditional roles kind of be pushed aside? What about housework? If it would become economically feasible that we could pay for such housework, would this be a good thing? And would more men jump into it, then? Let's talk about that. Should we upgrade homemaking and housework?
Definitely should. That's really one of my key concerns is about the whole women's movement, is that we have really not taken a look at the domestic issue. And I always say that there are many of the middle-class women riding to equality and liberation and freedom on the backs of the domestic, who is home, taking care of their children, doing their housework, without the proper benefits such as getting off of work at a decent hour to go home and look after their families, having social security benefits paid in for them, so in case something happens, they have something to live off and take care of their families, and their children can reap the benefits. Such times as paid sick leave, paid vacation leave, these people, the domestics, don't get it. And how would many of these women function if they didn't have a domestic? So that I don't say that we have to, I think the whole thing is that people have looked down on domestics and household work as the lowest kind of work you can do. But some people take pride in doing it. And it can be challenging to those who know how to do it. I'd love to have somebody to do mine. I'm not that interested. And I would really love to find the person who would want to do it. And give them all the respect that they have, but you still find this, well, as they used to say early in the Civil Rights Movement, this Miss Ann and the slave lady coming in to do the work from 7:00 in the morning till late at night at night.
And of course, then the liberal woman, white woman, at the meeting would say, "Well, where is our black sister in this movement?" And the black sister was at home, you know, I mean, at her home, doing the things that you're saying, to a large extent. Not all of them, of course, because some of them were there and some of them were doing other things. But this explains part of it.
I think that's something that women are paid well enough in most jobs to afford somebody to come in. I know this is true of a lot of us who are working, but the majority of the female workforce can't afford to, so they work 24 hours a day still, just as a break of routine. They go to the office and they come home and still do the housework. And they really don't have proper daycare for their children, which is not provided.
I definitely go to work to get rest because it seems like when I come home, I have so much to do. Not only that, I have other things I'd like to do. In order to sandwich it all in, we do what we call a cooperation thing. My children come home, they do their homework. After that, we have to do the cooking. We have to clean the house. The mama has to go bowling. And that's all there is to it. Daddy doesn't always like it. But I have been married since I was 16 years old, and I feel that now that my children are grown, that I need a desire to be out among people, to identify with other people, for other people to identify with me. Because if I can't be myself, I can't be any good to anybody. And I feel if the more homes, maybe I'm doing it wrong, but if more families would feel this responsibility, total responsibility, to the house, and we do our thing in the house, and when we go out, we do our thing out there within limitations, but when we come home, we can share everything we've got with each other. This, to me, is home, and this is the home of today. This is not where Mama stays home all the time. She's got to get out. What happens when they grow up? My baby, be 11 years old in a couple of weeks. My oldest daughter is 17. My kids are grown as far as they're going to go. And I have to identify. They'll be gone for me soon.
Let me ask you all something. Think about this and respond, if you will. Women are asking for equal rights. Women want to be paid equally. Women want to be placed in jobs of positions that have only heretofore been held by men. When women are in the workforce, and they are all so married and they have children, how should they respond, you know, if they're asked to work overtime? Should they say, "I'm sorry, I have to pick my child up after school"?
Yes, if it's necessary.
If they have to pick up the child after school, they have to pick up the child after school. And I think one of the problems that we have in an urban community is women who have to work and the community does not provide adequate daycare. Now, that is a very serious problem that we have to face in Baltimore. Because there are women who are alone, or sometimes their husbands earn so little that they can't pay the rent that is required for a decent environment for their children. And they're working not out of any love for work, but to survive in an urban community. And a lack of daycare facilities for children after school, and I'm not talking about preschool children, I'm talking about children after school, is a very serious problem in Baltimore. Because I meet this all the time, you know, working with clients.
Well, you know, I think I'd like to talk a moment, if I, Alice, if I could have a moment, to the fact that we're talking about change, and within change, there is pain. And people are going to suffer whenever this is taking place. And I'm speaking to a bit of what has come out here, and I'd like us, those of us who do not, are not aware of it, to look at Sweden, where there has been this kind of thing taking place over a period of time. And as a result of it, there aren't as many divorces. As a result of it, children are growing up happily. As a result of it, people are reaching, quote, "potentials" in a way that enables them to be satisfied within themselves and because of this satisfaction, then give out to others. And this is what we're talking about, this kind of interaction whereby people are fulfilled. And if, you know, we have to go through some pain here and now, I don't think it will be in the future. If we get the roles, get the roles accepted, maybe, roles is not the right word, get the sense of being about and get it going.
I think we may have to... Family. Without the family unit, if you don't have a strong family, you are not going to have a strong country. But the liberation of women does not mean that you weaken the family.
Right. Women are, this is the important thing you have to remember, women are the light, the center of a family.
But when the man and the woman...
And they should take pride in this, in being that.
Of course. But when they both are strong parents, you cannot be weakening the family. You see, the liberation of women does not mean that you're putting the man in a different kind of box. You're liberating everybody. Everybody is strong to reach their own potential. Everybody is strong to reach their own potential, to be good parents. The children will have better role models then, when both the father and the mother are involved in parenthood, and when they both have a good feeling of identity about themselves.
It's the responsibility of the children.
Of course not. But men have been doing this for generations.
I disagree with the comment that was made earlier about what a woman's responsibility is to a job, and whether or not she should work overtime if that's necessary. It seems to me that if we want equality, we're going to have to do the jobs in the same way that men do the jobs. And I agree that the family is important too. But if we make a contract with an organization or with a company to do a job for them, we're expected, and I would expect, to do this job to the best of my ability. I don't think we ought to ask for any special compensation for being women, because if we do that, then we are selling ourselves short.
The lady here?
I disagree about...
I think that women have a large difficulty, and a working mother, in holding down two roles. They have to hold down a level of competition with the man that they're working with, and yet they still have to keep the home fires burning. If they can afford a housekeeper, fine, but it's the woman that's supervising the housekeeper and supervising the raising of her children. And so she's got a double frustration. The man comes home from all day at work, he's a super father. He brought home the bacon. Well, the woman works all day and that's got to, then she's got to come home and cook the bacon. And she's got that dual role, to present to society, to present to the children, and to present to herself, whereas the man, you know, is standing on top.
And now they're putting another burden on women by saying, not only do you go out and work, and then you come home, but also if they tell you to stay and work extra hours, or if you need to, you know, you must stay extra hours. So she's got all these guilt, you see? And I just think it's absolutely insane that to pile more our guilt and problems on women. Why can't society afford some of that and allow a woman to get home in time to pick up her children? Is she going to let them just stand on a corner?
Personally, that this is, I think that personally, this is a choice that we, as women, people, persons, ladies, whatever we choose to be called, have to make, okay? If you choose to work and make $20,000 a year or $25,000 a year, just as Mr. Smith here, okay? You can't say, you know, hide behind your children and the dinner and all. And I agree that you cannot leave your children sitting, you know? You can't have empty pots and pans at home. But certainly, I would think that this is a choice that we, as women, would have to make.
Sometimes, but there are so many divorced women and women who have children that they must take care of alone for other reasons, and they don't have a choice. They have to work in order for those kids to eat. And now society is not trying to help them in any way. They're saying, "You stay here and do this job, get home at seven o'clock. You don't know where the kids are. Nobody's picked them up. They're roaming the street." That is just insane.
But I don't, I don't think, in all fairness to the establishment, that things are that cut and dry, nor do I think that that's what the lady was saying. I think she said, when you accept a job, okay, equal to a high-paying job, that a man would have...
It's much more complex than one job.
Our political clout as women to the solution of some of these problems, because there is beginning in Baltimore City now, a program that will provide after-school, before-school care for school-aged children. And 500 slots in this kind of program isn't very many, but we, as women, ought to be putting pressure on our elected officials, the mayor, the governor, the federal government, to provide adequate daycare, to provide adequate before and after-school and vacation time care as well. These are very important, and these are the kind of things that we feel guilty about as individuals and must solve them as individuals. And maybe the solutions should be provided jointly, you know, with some help from other places.
Let me ask another, let me just...
I was worried about this last summer. I visited a number of countries in Europe, and they had much more flexible daycare arrangements. Some people who worked in the daytime, some women who had one child, then they could leave the child in the daytime. Or if the woman works at night, then she could leave the child at the daycare center in the night. And there were flexible hours. You could phone and say, "I'm sorry, my boss wants me to stay an extra hour. Please keep my child until seven." I mean, we've got to develop in the whole daycare system greater flexibility, I believe.
Isn't another thing too, that part of the reconditioning, in terms of just the family itself, would then relieve the wife of making her feel that she is the sole party to look after those children, to have to run home after work? Then maybe on a day if you have to work late, that she just calls the husband and says, "Look, the kids have to be picked up because I have to stay late today," then maybe because we've all been reconditioned, he will say, "Yes, I will do it," rather than, "No, you have to do it because I'm working late too."
Nobody should be made to feel guilty because they have the kids to take, look after. I shouldn't have to feel guilty because my kids are home standing on a corner and can't get in the house. I should not have to feel guilty because of this.
It's a shared responsibility.
There should be a share, share and share alike.
I'm going to add that it seems to me that we also, in developing the family, need to develop a shared responsibility among the children as well. We've gotten away from the chores that I can remember as a youngster having to do. And so many young people have been given everything and assumed that everything was going to be set out for them. And I think perhaps the family could be strengthened if mother works, if the older daughter comes home and starts the dinner, or does the dusting, or makes the beds, or whatever it happens to be.
That's a very positive point to end on.
We're grandparents.
Let's take a break and come back.
The phrase "women's issues" is one like the movement. Its open to many interpretations. Are only the problems that relate directly to women, women's issues. Should welfare and tax reform and increased participation in political process be our top priorities for women?
In the field of social issues, perhaps women should not be concerned exclusively with the problems of female alcoholics, addicts, prisoners, and runaways, but devote their energies to the social problems as they affect everyone. What problems evoke in women a sense of their own common bond? And then their common bond, and that's called for common action? Or, as we ask in the title of this program, is the common bond a lot of bunk?
I think the common bond is the fact that we all bear children. You know, that's what, when we talk about choices, we also talk about conflicts. When we talk about special problems, about women alcoholics, or women offenders, or women at work, it's because that conflict that we feel because of our children causes special problems.
And we should, who are single, can't share? Group within our common bond have, have children and the have-not children?
Absolutely not. I think that when we talk about some of the problems... No, not at all. I'm saying that part of discussion here today has been about conflicts and guilt and the inability to work and come home and rest because the household is waiting, because the children are waiting, because we can't say to an employer, "Yes, I'm going to stay and work till eight o'clock because we have other responsibilities." Okay, maybe those other responsibilities aren't always children. We are always in some kind of a double binder, some kind of a conflict.
But isn't another and better definition of the common bond, the fact that we are defined by men? I really can't accept any kind of concept that says that it's because we have children or because we're married. It seems to me that what we all share is that we're someone else's daughter, or we're someone's wife, or we're someone's mother. We are not ourselves. And so it seems to me that one of the points of solidarity that has come out very strikingly this afternoon, although we obviously disagree on numbers of issues, we seem to agree on one thing. We are women and we're in favor, it seems to me, single mothers, those that don't have children, on childcare centers. And these are the kind of practical issues that we agree on. We will never agree, nor has the movement ever been in consensus on broad-based issues. And this has always been one of the problems, the fragmentation of the movement. And I think we see it and we enjoy it this afternoon because it is academic, but it's difficult to act out these problems. I'd like to remember that I am defined by men, and this is my solidarity with you.
But men are also defined by men.
And by women. And by women. So that's no big... I think there's another common bond in addition to things like childcare, and that is our basic rights to vote, to have credit, to buy a house, to live, to make individual choices. And regardless of what the choice is, whether it be the homemaker, the housewife, the career gal, or what have you, it seems to me that there is a certain common thread that runs through the characteristics of all women. They want the right to be able to develop credit for themselves. They want the right to rent an apartment if they need to, if they're single, or if they're a mother without a father around. These too, it seems to me, are common bonds. And I would hope the common bond of some political action would be one that we need to develop.
Let me ask a very crucial question. Where does the black female fit in the women's liberation movement?
I was just going to ask, because number one, your common bond sounded like this is the thing that separates out, you know, the poor black woman from even the middle-class black woman, from the middle-class white woman. Because the rights that you just listed are not the rights of the black poor or the black welfare woman.
But they're not the rights of the white poor either.
Then they're not a common bond. And I think it's a sad commentary that, you know, if we can't define the common bond before we leave, that's why we have a women's movement, that we cannot come up with the definition of a common bond except intangibles that only pertain to a few of us, like the middle-class white or the middle-class black. It's a very sad commentary.
But our inferior status, as defined by men, is our common bond. And it doesn't matter whether you're rich or poor, or black or white.
I'm afraid that I cannot completely agree that it's always an inferior status. For many, many years, I have had options. I have had the option to practice law or the option to be dependent on my husband. Until the women's movement came, which in effect said to me, "If you're going to practice law, you've got to do it on equal terms with a man." I could practice law as a dilettante, or I could practice it seriously. It was my option and my privilege. I don't think that we are always, or have been, inferior. And I have seen, and I'm reluctant to say this, but I have seen in the courts, a very difficult backlash from the women's movement, where when I go into court with a client asking for child support, the judge says, "The mother and father are equally responsible for the support of children. It costs $30 minimum to support a child. We will therefore give her an award of $15 for child support." Where a year ago, I would have gotten an award of $30 in the same situation. And I'm very, very concerned about this. I don't know what the answers are, and I think the ultimate goals of the movement are good.
I think that...
This is a common bond. This is that women want to improve themselves, their husband's situation, their children's situation. In other words, I see it as improvement, as a common bond of women. Now, I happen, I think it's to improve things in the city, in the state, in the nation, and I happen to be connected with an organization that wants to bring peace to the world. And our common bond is the women who want to work for that get together. And this brings them together more than womanhood brings them together.
We have to remember back to when you talk about stereotypes. And because of economic development and the job market and birth control and different things that women are, you know, accessible to today, that we do, you know, and we can enforce the common bond. Because, take from way back, a long time ago, since the earliest of times, women had usually one main duty, and that was to bear children. And you didn't have the accessibility of having birth control. If you weren't married, or you were, your distance was separated by a man, that you had no contact with the man. But because of the change in times, because women see their children go to school age, they are under grasp of being in the house so much, and there's more need to look at perspective and develop yourself and see that there is more to life besides being in the type that men have put you in from the earliest of times. Now you have a general common bond. You are woman first, regardless to whether you're black, white, Indian, Mexican, you are a woman.
I see it somewhat, I see it differently. I think that there are some legal problems that have to be worked out, those of credit, being able to buy houses and so on. But I think that there's something more, and it has to do with an attitude of women about themselves. Women are defined by men to the extent to which they allow themselves to be. Black women have been liberated for a long time because they did not have the luxury. So that's where the problem is, in the attitude of the women, and not the extent.
Excuse me, when you said black women have been liberated, I cannot go along with that because black women have never been able to buy a home, even though she was...
Well, I prefaced it by saying that there are some legal problems that have to be worked out.
Well, let me clear up one legal problem. There is a state law now in Maryland that women have the right to get credit in their name, whether they're Ms., Mrs., or Miss. Equal credit opportunity law, that is now in the books.
And their husband has to, if they're married, they have to have the wife's signature if the husband's going in to do something. It is a movement that works both ways.
Let me ask too, what about the young woman in the movement as opposed to the old woman? Is there a generation gap? Not the old woman, but the older woman. Thank you, Jackie. Is there a generation gap within the movement?
I feel, I feel that, you know, we've discussed an awful lot of things this afternoon, but I really think that the common bond, like someone else said, is that we are women and that we are really striving for happiness, for, to be able to live, live a good life with our men and women together. I think really that the black woman can really teach the women's liberation a real lesson, because black women and black men have been working together, struggling together for an awful long time, ever since we were brought here. And our children, many of our children have made great strides, and this is the kind of thing that women ought to be working together for the benefits, for childcare, but really to be able to live together, men and women.
There seem to be, excuse me, there seem to be many ideas as to what the common bond is, and if there is in fact a common bond. And we're going to talk about it a little bit further when we come back after these messages.
We're nearing the end of International Women's Year, and of course, a decade of the women's movement. Do you feel any differently about the movement today than you did, let's say, 10 years ago when it started?
Is it attracting new people, people that shut them out before?
Yes, I think one example of that was last year's Women's Fair, when we attracted almost 4,000 women to an all-day conference on women's issues. And I might just put in a tiny plug, that February the 11th, we're going to repeat it at the Civic Center with another broad view look at women. But the point is that women are interested enough to take time out to come and listen and observe. And I think this is something that 10 years ago would never have happened in Baltimore. Well, you know, I think the mood of the country dictates about how much progress the movement is going to make. If you just take a look at what the civil rights movement was doing in the '60s, it was the key issue. There was a theme, and we had white, black, everybody working together. Then the women's movement came along, and then finally, the ecology movement came along. Then we have all of the unrest over the world. So that I think that the nation, and maybe the world as a whole, doesn't look at the women's movement and even basically the civil rights movement as a priority item or issue at this particular time.
Because survival issues are perhaps...
That's right. And so I think we're losing some of the progress, the steam that we had early on.
There was a disagreement right here.
I think that until the women's movement has been made more attractive to not only middle-class white women and educated women, but minority women and poor women from different areas, I mean, we need to learn how to associate with some of the women from Dundalk. We need to deal with the women who live in the inner city. And until we can make the women's movement attractive to them, we're not going to solve any of the problems that we all share as women.
I think it's because they don't feel it's their problem.
That's right.
They feel it's your problem, you handle it any way you can. I'm doing the best I can by survival.
I disagree with that, simply because I have the experience of living in a low-income neighborhood, and I understand how those women feel. Like this group, you know, like, the only thing that we deal with are little coffee groups or exercise classes, where you have the expertise to do this. Those women need help, all right? They don't make a lot of money, they don't have a lot of time they can spend because they do have large families to deal with. And those women are frightened by the women's movement. I've only been involved in this movement for like about 18 months, and I'm still frightened of it. I really haven't grasped, you know?
Perhaps they're frightened because they have not been educated to what it is.
Okay, so if there's a common bond, why aren't we, you know, there trying to help those people? We all understand, we identify with what we know to be in our background. I think if we all understood what they call a woman's movement, when actually, any kind of movement is your movement. It's not everybody's movement, it's what you can put into it. And if they feel they can't give to it, or they can't understand what it's all about, I'm not associated with any woman's movement or any kind of movement, but I feel a common bond toward people.
Right. Don't you think what we're doing today and what we do far more frequently, without being on television while we do it, which is talk to... on television while we do it, which is talk to one another and find out the common bond that we have, that we have experienced as women, as girls growing up in this society, which is black and white and rich and poor? And take advantage and make more of the opportunities that we have to talk to one another and learn that what hurts my sister hurts me, and what hurts my sisters hurts people. And that what helps is going to help all of us, and that, you know, that we have a vested interest in one another. And I think if our young people can get this in their schools, and talking to each other, and in their groups, and as they become women, that they can share this with each other and with men, this would be a great thing.
The common bond is very strong among people all over, in Dundalk, inner-city neighbors, wherever they are, especially when you talk to the women who give countless of hours in volunteer work. They give countless hours, they all have the same problem of still having to dash home, put the food on the table. They're doing class jobs and very highly specialized jobs that they really are not getting the recognition for.
Do they have a sense of identity with the woman that she was talking about?
I think often...
The ones from Dundalk?
Oh, yes. They are from Dundalk.
Just let me ask you one question, and we don't have much time to go into it, but I just want an overall response. Do you think men are threatened by the women's movement? Or don't you care?
They know. They know. We're on our way.
And we agree, because men must be liberated, too. And they must be free to express themselves in ways that have been blocked out.
There's no alternative to that. So we gotta learn to live together.
It's really people liberation that we're talking about today.
But I think we also have to be cautious that we don't overemphasize... I think we have to be cautious that we don't overemphasize individualism to the loss of cooperation and group identity. Because if we all go off on our own, as someone said very early in this meeting, then we end up with chaos.
Well, ladies, thank you for having been with us.
I think one of the magic words of common bond is respect. I think women has to respect themselves as women.
And respect the men, too.
And respect the men, and men has to respect us as women. Black should respect the white.
We've been talking freely and openly for an hour about concerns that women have, not only as women, but as individuals. We've asked questions and found in the answers more questions. And that's what a town meeting is all about, bringing different attitudes out into the open, seeking a better understanding of issues, alerting us to what's been done and what we can do still.
Task forces have already been organized to deal with the eight issues on the Maryland Women's Agenda, and these groups will continue to act in the months and years ahead. The events of International Women's Year have heightened the awareness of many to the concerns of women, just as it has prompted us to ask, "Womanhood, is the common bond a lot of bunk?"
We thank all of you in the studio for sharing in our town meeting, and for all of you out there for joining us. I'm Jackie Hall, along with Susan White. Good afternoon.